Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cindy Heiburger couldn't be here this morning. She has other duties that she has to attend to, so I'm going to be chairing this morning as vice chair, but this is one of the days where I actually get to hold the gavel. So, turning to that, what I'd like to do is remind everybody to please silence your cell phones. Once again, the meeting documents are available for review, and I believe it's in a binder. I don't know where it is. There it is. Okay, it's right at the end, it's in the black binder. And then, of course, if you need any special listening advice, please feel free to contact Robert, and he can facilitate that for you. Turning to the routine agenda, what a routine business, I'd like to go to item number one, consider a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
There is.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number two, approval of the county commission minutes from March 18th, 2014.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Cindy, usually we let you read these off, so...
I continue it.
Okay, okay. I'll just go ahead and continue.
Just continue, you're doing a job.
Okay, a little respite today.
Today is Cindy's vacation, both have.
All right, great, okay. So, item number three are bills to be paid in the amount now of $488,760.87.
Pay the bills with a comment.
There's a motion, is there a second? There's a second, and Jeff, you have a comment?
Today's bills include $175,000 for metro communications.
Thank you, Mr. Barth. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four are reports, and we don't have any reports this morning. Item number five are personnel actions, and we do have, good morning, we do have item A, which is to consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Do we have a motion for routine?
Who made that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for routine action. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item B is to consider a request for special personnel action to convert the Assistant Planning Director position to a planner position. And of course, this would be the appointment of a candidate to either a planner one or two, pay grade sixteen or seventeen, is dependent upon qualifications. Good morning.
Good morning, Jen Addix from Human Resources. You've received a briefing memo on Scott Anderson's request to convert this position, and we're converting from the Assistant Planning Director to either Planner One or Two. It's very common in latter positions like the planner positions or the attorney positions to hire out a one or two depending on the qualifications of the applicant. So, this is standard for this type of position, and Scott Anderson is here too if you have any questions about his request.
Are there any questions for Ms. Addix or Mr. Anderson?
Move for approval.
We have a motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second. If I do have a question.
Yes, there's a second and a question.
I'm sorry, Scott, I didn't... What provisions are made then when you're out of the office?
Well, I always have my cellphone with me, so I can take, I can field questions pretty much all the time, but I just sort of try to keep an eye on what might be on the horizon. I can delegate the authority to sign Platts and to, you know, issue building permits. That is already all taken care of administratively. It just, there would be, you know, there would be a little bit more responsibility, more coordination that I'd have to go through when I'm out of the office.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Anderson this morning? Okay, seeing none, we do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, thank you, Ms. Addix. Next is item number six, applications for abatement, and we have some elderly freeze. Good morning, Pam, how are you?
Good morning. I have a request for assessment release for record ID 55010 for $144.14, and for record ID 39197 for $761.17, and for record ID 39967 for $574.38, and they're all for the elderly or disabled property.
Thank you, thank you. Sue, are there any, or Pam, are there any questions for Pam this morning?
I'd make approval, move approval for all three of these elderly freeze.
We have a motion for Mr. Barth, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Ms. Nelson.
Thank you.
So, turning to item D is, once again, a application. Kyle, I'll go ahead and let you handle item D.
Good morning, Commissioners, Kyle Helsa, Equalization Office. We bring for your consideration four requests this morning for abatements. The first being from Shirley E. Wilson, record ID 52, no, pardon me, 32448, 2013 property taxes, the amount of $119.24. This was for a house that was razed.
Thank you. There's a motion.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item E.
This is a request from Angela K. Dennison, record ID 53030, for 2013 property taxes in the amount of $1,414.39. The house had burnt down.
Can't tax a house that isn't there. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. F.
Item F is for Ryan Davis, record ID 5197, 57197, 2013 property taxes in the amount of $836.55. This is the difference between the owner occupied and the non-owner occupied.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And then we have item G.
Item G is a request from Russell R. Bartunik, record ID 45926, for property taxes in 2009, 10, 11, 12, and 13, in the amount of $2,859.18. We're recommending denial because there is nothing, no provision within the certified law to grant this.
Thank you. So, there's been a recommendation to deny, and is there a motion from the commission?
I have a question for Kyle.
Yes, question.
Kyle, did this person protest their taxes any of those years?
No, sir.
Move to deny.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Helsa.
Thank you.
Item number seven are notices and requests. We don't have any this morning. Item eight are planning and zoning notices. We also don't have any planning or zoning notices, and there are no compromises of lien this morning. This is a time and place for an opportunity for public comment for anybody that would wish to address the commission on any non-agenda item. So, good morning. Shannon.
Good morning, Commissioner Shannon Schultz, County Highway Department. We would like to just, as a point of order, let you everybody know that the highway department will be going to summer hours, which is 4:10, Monday through Thursday, starting April 22nd.
And hopefully the snow will be off the ground.
I hope so.
All right, so thank you for the notice. Are there any questions for Mr. Schultz? Shannon, just one moment.
Question on that. So, on Saturday Fridays, what would be the procedure to, will someone answer the phone?
Our summer hours are seven to 5:30 on Fridays. Technically, we're closed. There will be people there now and then, you know, administrative staff will be there to answer the phones for sure, but the 40 hours occurs Monday through Friday.
Thanks.
Thursday, sorry.
And if there's an emergency, we know where to get hold of you.
Oh, absolutely.
Right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Next, we turn to our regular business agenda, and at nine o'clock, we have a public hearing in item number 10, to consider the application of a special event malt beverage license and special event wine retailer's license for the Riviera by Rocos, and there's an interesting procedural issue that came up with this. The application was referred by the city of Sioux Falls for consideration primarily because Riviera by Rocos is located just south of Brandon in Romania County. But this application was actually, I believe, for the museum, the second floor in the large courtroom. So, there seemed to be a procedural question. They thought it was going to be out in the county. So, I believe that this has actually been referred back to the city for their consideration. So, I suppose we could go ahead and entertain a motion to just, what?
Table it.
Yeah, then, here comes Mr. McFarland. He has an idea.
We listed this on the agenda simply because we had published notice of that, just in case anybody showed up. I mean, the appropriate action would really be no action on this thing because the application is properly before the city right now with their review. So, again, we just kept it on the agenda because it was a published notice.
All right, so...
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, there's a withdrawal of the motion, and the commission will take no action pending a decision from the city. So, thank you. So, we're going to move on to item number 11, which is a consider a drainage permit application, 14-02, submitted by Roger Wallace, did I say that correctly? Okay. And to conduct agricultural drainage on property legally described as East half section 26, tract 104, North Range 50 west of Burke Township. Mr. Anderson, good morning.
Thank you. Scott Anderson, representing the county planning department. I'll give you a brief overview, and then I have some pictures that I'll show you of the site. The applicant is Roger Wallace, and he is requesting to do some agricultural tiling in section 26 of Burke Township. Today is the public hearing, and notice was sent out to all the downstream property owners within one half a mile on March 3rd, and there were two of those downstream property owners. Mr. Wallace was able to obtain the signed waiver of the closest downstream property owner, and, which is, the property in blue is, you can see the proposed tile is in red. He was able to secure the waiver from the property owners directly south. However, the other property, which is the larger property here, is in a trust, and the trust is located in Minneapolis. Mr. Wallace was not able to secure the downstream property owner's signature, and is unaware whether they're opposed or not opposed, it was a matter of just unable to contact them, and so he has gone through the process of requesting a hearing before the drainage board to install the tile. He's proposing to put in three lateral lines, the tile's about four inches, it'll be a four-inch tile. You can see the, there is a very well-defined drainage way that flows here towards the Big Sioux River, it's an unnamed drainage way, and I'll show you the pictures. This is sort of, when I was out there in March, it was really relatively muddy, so I just sort of shot a picture from the road up towards where the drainage is going to occur, and this is sort of looking down. But you can see there, when it crosses the township road, there is a very, there is a very nice drainage way that this all flows into, you can see the creek there. So, I did make that site visit on the 14th, and the tile line outlets into an area that is functioning all within the same watershed, and according to the wetlands determination, there are no wetlands according to NRCS on the property. The staff finds that the tile lines to be appropriate, and they're being placed in an area that all functions in the same drainage basin, and we're recommending approval of drainage permit 14-02. I'd be glad to answer any questions, I think that was the last straight up.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Kelly.
The notification you're doing by mail and writing, correct?
That's right.
Do we have any indication whether or not that trust received that letter?
The way that the ordinance is written is it's just by first-class mail, so it didn't come back to us.
It did not.
It did not come back, so, and we use, we use the Director of Equalizations records for where they're receiving their tax notifications. So, they have been paying their taxes, they didn't come back, so I hate to make an assumption, but, you know, that we made the good faith effort to contact them according to the requirements of our drainage ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Well, just one moment, it is a public hearing.
Oh, the public hearing, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, so I'll come back to that, Commissioner Kelly. This is a time and place for a public hearing, so if there's any other proponents, I believe Mr. Wallace, you're here today, or at least, could you please state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
My name is Tim Wallace, I'm the son of the applicant and renter. We, I'll just comment real quickly, we do have, we have not talked to the Williamson Estate directly, but we do have some feedback through them because the farmer that rents from them is our neighbor, his name is Terry Bonecamp, and we have talked with him, and he has communicated with them several times about this project. We know that they're not philosophically opposed to tile because in discussions, they asked us to provide a quote to tile their land as well, and we considered doing the whole thing as one project, and we were willing to subsidize the main line going through, but we just, they have not been able to say yes or no, and we just can't get an answer out of them, and we've, that's been over a year ago, and so I guess that's part of the reason we brought it to the commission is just to get a decision.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Wallace. Are there any other questions for Mr. Wallace? Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
The stream that it's flowing into, is that a persistent stream? Does it dry up in the summer, or does it, does it go all year round?
No, it, I would say it dries up most of the season. It's a, I mean, that's a representative picture there, it's a pretty well-defined ditch, and this is in the springtime here where it's melting a little bit, but most of the time, I would say it's dry.
We have had a suggestion in the past that streams that flow year-round, we would actually name and have, and it would make it easier to do this.
Yeah, I think we'd call it the blue line.
Yeah, sure.
But...
But it could be Wallace Creek, I don't know.
I like that.
Our creek's got a nice range out too.
Any other questions? So, at least you haven't received any negative feedback from the trust.
Yeah, I would say, you know, like I said, they're not opposed to tile, they just, we just can't get a decision on it, or the other problems, so...
All right, thank you. So, are there any other questions for Mr. Wallace? All right, thank you. Are there any other proponents or people that want the tiling to go in, that wish to speak to the commission? Seeing none, we're going to turn to opposition. Is there anybody here in opposition to the tiling? Anyone? All right, Commissioner Kelly, I believe you had a motion.
Yeah, move to approve.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Barth.
Just would ask the state's attorney if our notification is sufficient.
My opinion is the notification is sufficient, not only with the letter to the last tax address on file with us, but also we've followed the requirements of published notices while, between those two things, I believe this is sufficient.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wallace. So, item number 12 is to consider a bid award for a signed crane truck body with truck body trade-in from Minniah County Highway Department, and of course, the bids were open March 12th, 2014. Mr. Schultz.
Good morning again, Commissioner Shannon Schultz, Highway Department. So, bids were open, we had three bids, two, what are, two successful bids and one no-bid from Northern Truck Equipment. I would like to point out that the reason Northern Truck Equipment did not bid is we have a regular working relationship with Northern Truck Equipment, and it was their acknowledgement that they received the bid, so they just said, "Yeah, we got it, we're not going to bid, thank you."
All right.
So, the successful bidder, a low, apparent low bidder, was Custom Truck Equipment at Sanitation Products was the second bid at $50,584, and our engineer's estimate, or office estimate, I should say, Tom Peterson's estimate is, was $50,000 even, so we're looking good there. One thing I wanted to point out is, our request is kind of a dual request. One is to declare the existing utility body on truck, the F-550, as surplus. The bids we received are contingent upon us giving them back that old truck body as a trade-in. So, the bids we received, again, include the trade-in, so it's a dual agenda item, I guess, so it's a declare of surplus as well as an award.
Okay. That was an F-150?
F-550.
F-550, thank you. All right, and, all right, so, do you make a recommendation for custom truck, then?
Custom Truck Equipment, yes, that is our recommended award.
All right, thank you. Thank you, and that was in the amount of $48,866, contingent on the trade-in of the, the surplusing of the truck body from the F-550. All right, Jeff, you have a question?
So, are we going to just put this new thing onto the old F-550?
That is correct. The existing F-550 was purchased in 2011, and so that's barely in good shape. The truck body that was put on that chassis was quite old, we knew we could get a few years out of that, and we did, and so here we are, replacing the working piece of the truck.
All right, so are there any other questions for Mr. Schultz this morning? Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, there's a second. Any further discussion? So, once again, the motion, of course, would be to go ahead and to accept the bid from Custom Truck Equipment, Inc., in the amount of $48,866 with this agreement that it is contingent on the surplusing of the truck body from the F-550, to go ahead and have that surplus. That's the motion. All right, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Now, do you need a motion to surplus the truck body?
I think, I think we should.
I'll make a motion.
It was all one motion.
Well, yeah, apparently we don't.
All right.
It's a little overkill.
Okay.
Okay, I'd be happy to if you want to, just, we can, we can kick this dead horse, we can give another motion.
We're fine.
Motion to surplus, going once, going twice? Anybody? All right, so, say it. So, item 13, consider a bid award for asphalt overlay on a portion of Minniah County Highway 109, 115, and 150, and the bids were open March 19th, 2014. Mr. Schultz.
Good morning again. As before, an agenda item, we had four bids and a no response or no bid from Merlin Royce. The apparent low bidder threw the certified bid tab, which there were no anomalies, is Asphalt Servicing Company, also known locally as ASCO, in the amount of $1,340,469.20. Just for informational purposes, the high bid was Seal Pros, Inc., from $1,472,325. And so, it's a pretty tight bidding group there, our engineering cost was roughly 1.5 million, and the reason that our bid was higher than what actually was opened is we estimated $65 per ton for the asphalt oil, whereas the low bidder provided a bid for $50 a ton, so that's basically why it came in lower than our estimate.
Thank you. All right, so, looks like we have some recommendations, so what's your pleasure to the commissioner?
Move.
Yes, Commissioner Barth?
Is ASCO a local company?
Yes, they are, right off Russell.
Right, wow.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 14 is consider a bid for Project Seal, 2014 chip sealing of 41.765 miles of county highway on highways 104, 110, 122, 130, 146, 150, 151, and 155. Bids opened on March 19th, 2014. Mr. Schultz.
Thank you, Commissioners. Similar situation here. We had seven successful bidders. The apparent low bidder, after certifying the bid tabulation, again, no anomalies, was McLaughlin Schultz, Inc., in the amount of $1,019,681.70. The high bidder was Missouri Petroleum, in the amount of $1,210,448.95. Our construction engineer's estimate was $929 and change, $29,000 and change. Again, the kicker on our difference in price was we bid as an engineering staff, $570 a ton for the oil. The successful low bidder was $656.36 per ton, so it just gives you an indication of the variability in oil prices between the chip seal and the asphalt overlay. So, we recommend a award to McLaughlin and Schultz.
Thank you. And you're not related to the Schultz of the McLaughlin and Schultz, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Jeff.
So, is that a local company?
No, it's not, they're, they have an affiliate office in Watertown, and they also have, this bid came out of a small town in Minnesota right over the border.
Thank you.
What state, in the town if you wish?
Any other, any other questions?
Am I right, is there just a .1 percent difference in the two?
10 percent.
Nope. Between the high and the low, maybe.
Is it 10?
Oh, oh, yeah, no, no, you're right, I was thinking, yeah.
It's less than 1 percent.
Right, there's less than 1, yeah, you're correct. But I thought, what I was trying to say was that we originally estimated around $929,000, we're at $1,019, so we're about a 10 percent swing there. So, we're close, you know?
I move for approval.
If you were giving an A at 90 percent, I'd give you an A. All right?
Right on.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner Bennigan. You were the only one that voted. All right, next is item number 15, consider a motion to appoint Connie Malone, I think it's Maloney, or is it Malone?
It's Malone.
Okay, Connie Malone to the Minniah County Surplus Property Appraisal Board. Mr. McFarland.
Commissioners, we typically have an appra, a surplus property appraisal board consisting of four members, and those members are currently Richard Calamine, Dan Alexander, and former county commissioner Jim Sweet, and that we had a former member, Bill Matheson, and that who's no longer able to, to perform those functions as the appraisal board. And the surplus property appraisal board is primarily concerned with going out and putting valuations on tax-deep properties, and that we have a recommendation, and that to add Connie Malone to the surplus property appraisal board, she would replace Mr. Matheson, and that, and Connie was a former employee of the Equalization Office, so she does have some background and knowledge on the process and evaluation process. We actually have a couple pieces of property that we have coming up that we need the appraisal board to go out and do some work on, and right now, because of the time of year, there are certain members who are out of state, and that, and we just do need to have at least two members of the board be available to go out and do some work for us. So, with your concurrence, we'd like to appoint Connie Malone to the surplus property appraisal board.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. McFarland this morning? Question?
So, the aerial photos accompanying this and our...
That is just an example of one of the pieces of property we need to go look at.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is item 16, which is the Minniah County Commissioner Liaison Report. Are there any reports this morning? Commissioner Kelly?
Tonight, Sioux Falls tomorrow is having a public meeting for the, for the project, I think we're almost done with it now, so if anyone has any input they'd like to get at six-thirty at the Holiday Inn, I believe, and just an opportunity to, you'll hear what the KPAs are doing, key performance areas, and then, I'm not, I didn't see the schedule, but they'll be public testimony on that, so if you want, and you can pass it on to me if you want to, but otherwise, if you just encourage to show up.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Are there any other liaison reports? Okay, seeing none, let's move to item seventeen, new businesses. Is there any new business to come before the commission this morning? Any new business? Seeing none, we'll move to item eighteen, old businesses, is there any old business? Here comes, Mr. McFarland, Mr. McFarland.
Commissioner, I just wanted to, as a reminder, the, you know, as you know, last week, the county spring workshop for commissioners was canceled due to some weather, and that, so that event has been rescheduled, it's now a one-day event for April second, and that, next week, Wednesday, April second, so if any of you are interested in attending, and that, please let me know, we just got to confirm reservations and that, but, and there's already a sample agenda that's been printed, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland, are there any questions? Jeff?
I just had a, a whole business.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.